...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Could you please remain standing and bear with me for a minute or two? I'm gonna read just a few things about concerning the celebration of the lives of Mike and Christie Applebaum. You know, for us that knew Mike, never want to take credit for anything. I'm just asking the public to remember that he cared more about people than anyone I've ever known in my life. His family and Mike's personal impact and that of the Decastine Foundation has made an unmeasurable positive impact in our city throughout his life. When you think of Sunbury and around the greater Susanna Valley, you should think of Mike, who had an impact on just about everything. And when you think of our city, we have healthcare clinics in our downtown, we have redevelopment of city neighborhoods, we have youth training centers, city celebrations at all levels, purchasing of vacant downtown business buildings and hope for revitalization, feeding the needy, creating sporting opportunities for kids, pages of vulnerability, Bucknell's impacts, Susquehanna's impacts, and many, many more. He should never be forgotten. I would ask that the moment is a silent prayer for the entire Applebaum family.
Hysink?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Rechner?
Here.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
I need approval minutes of the Police Department, Treasurer, and Attorney. Code Office, Public Works, Redevelopment Authority, Parks and Immigration, Plan Mission. In a second.
Eister? Hysink?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Randy is here?
Randy?
There you are, Randy. We tried to talk a little bit about that in the past, but you weren't here, so we thought we'd wait for somebody knowledgeable.
Well, I don't know about that.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you for having me. Basically, now, what best way to do this is? Well, it's, this is just, I'm here to represent the week that group mission work camps was here, July 12th through the 18th, and the impact that it had on our community. And I must say, there was a few negative, but I was overwhelmed with the positive that happened in the community during that week. And I'm not talking about the repairs that were done. I'm talking about the uplifting things that were said about the relationships that were built in this community at that time. And Mike Applebaum was a part of it. No, it's just amazing. This is just a map of the areas and the sites, the sites that we worked on. As you can see, the majority of them, of the 58, the majority of them were all in Sunbury, the city of Sunbury. We had a few outside the limits of Sunbury, some in Northumberland, and some in Upper Augusta Township and Rockefeller Township. But those, all those projects were the ones that were worked on. There were 384 participants that came from outside of the area, representing Virginia, Maryland, Connecticut, New Hampshire, Maine. There were some from Pennsylvania, and Colorado, and Ohio, and there were 10 states represented from the work camp that came in, the majority of them being teenagers, 14 years and up. There were adult leaders, and there were volunteers from the community that were tremendous. We had, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, but there were 58 sites that were worked on, 53 were completed, there are several that are not completed, and we're still working on volunteers to finish those projects, such as upper peak painting, and some stair, no, no, steps that the backs need to be treated. What do you call it? The backs between the risers, yeah, yeah, need to be filled in, a door sweep, simple things like that. But there was one major one that could not be completed, we ran into some major problems with it, but we're still working with the residents, and we have somebody that's volunteered the extra materials that will be needed to complete that project, and we're working on volunteers or someone at a minimal cost, because it needs a professional contractor to finish that project. They ran into such rot. But I just want to build upon the relationships that were built during that time. Since the work camp, some of the kids have come up from Virginia and visited their residents and bringing their families to meet them. They have brought, they brought gifts, they developed a relationship with these 58 homeowners that is talked about to this day. If you didn't have a chance to come to any of our closing programs, ask the mayor. I'm telling you, it was awesome, having all of them fill the gymnasium at the school. The school staff was amazed at the things that were happening, the, how the kids were, and how all the, they were like, wow, we had no idea it was gonna be like this. And it just, I had people calling me after the work camp, asking for phone numbers for their residents and following up on that. But one of the things, and I'm gonna tell you, the one thing I heard more than anything, what a welcoming community we have here. People walking down the street, people honking their horns at them and telling them, great job, while they were driving by. I had, we had one person, she went to the post office every day to get the mail, and she said she came down here by the courthouse, and a deputy sheriff came running out of the courthouse, and she was like, whoa, you know, like this. She said, oh, are you with that work camp? Because they wear red shirts. Are you with that work camp? Are you with that work camp? And she said, yeah, I am. And she said, I just want to tell you what a great job it is, and, oh, we're so glad you're here in our community, come in and let me give you a tour of the courthouse. And she's like, okay. So they went in. But I heard that over and over and over about how welcoming this, you should all be proud of yourself. As the chief, we had a crime saw by one of the work crews, and they saw a hit-and-run, and another, they got the photographs of the license plate, and they were able to attach them, and then they made the chief sing Amazing Grace with it.
Yeah, really, and I would say, oh, I'm just.
And it was, it was awesome. I mean, that's the kind of thing, more so than anything, that's what was developed out of this work camp. And I've been contacted also, not just by group, but also by other people in the community, are you going to do this again? Would you please do this again? And I've been meeting with people and seeing about doing it again, but it would be two years. It just, you just don't know, when you're, you feel like all the roadblocks are up there, and this isn't gonna happen, this isn't gonna happen, this isn't gonna happen, even the school, which I was having some problems there, because they had no idea what to expect, we're like, are you coming back again? So it was a great, a great thing. But I just wanna, I just wanna read this, they write what they call care cards, and the care cards are notes and things that they write about thanking you, or it's a card of affirmation, or a note of affirmation. We are so blessed to be here. This was by a child that was here working on the, you did a lot of work to get us here, thank you, it was a great experience, and I will definitely be back. These are all the care cards that they wrote. But this, this here, this one touched my heart. How refreshing to read an article in the Daily Item newspaper about the good that the group work camps foundation program is doing in our community. I get so disillusioned by all the bad things we read in the paper, and it is faith restoring to read about young adults that actually paid to join this organization and help people out. What an amazing bunch of individuals. They cut their summer short so they can help others. I have seen them working on houses on Second Street and Front Street in Sunbury. My mom works at Nineham Village, and she knows a woman there that is having rehab at the facility. She said a group was working on her house, and this is all true, because I knew who this was, and she highly praised them for how wonderful they are. She is so pleased with everything they have done, and she said they are very polite. It's nice to know that in just a few years, these people will be the generation that will lead our country. She, I am closing a small check made out to the church to help purchase needed items for the workers, and put it toward next year's contribution if you have them come again. Those are the, I got thank you cards from the residents, I thank you for all you did, and taking the wood away, because we went around, took some of that away, God bless you all. Just, those were the kinds of things, and I, so many times, and I'm gonna, I'll say it right out, so many times I hear people down this community, and it is so disheartening. This is not what some people are saying. This is a great community. It is a wonderful community. And, and the thing is, is when you have outsiders coming in, and that's what they see, and that's what they're telling you, I'm telling you, you don't know what a wonderful community this is, and, and we need to appreciate it, and we need to remember that this work camp, for me, it was, it was spirit filling, and the relationships that were built during this time is what was important. But if you, there's a lot of homes, I hope, had hoped to have pictures, but sorry, I didn't. I just, I couldn't get them, get them ready. But here's just a picture, and I'll leave this here for you, and I'll get it later, Terry. This is a picture of the group. Wasn't that awesome, just seeing that group of people? This is a picture of the group that was at the high school, they filled up the one side of the gymnasium, and they're, how excited they were. And they, they were also wonderful about, they learn a lot. And so it's, it's just a two-fold thing, and relationships, it's all about relationships, folks, but does anybody have any questions? I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes, ma'am.
Regina Russell, Community.
Yes.
Activist and candidate for Sunbury City Council. What are the qualifications for the program?
The program qualifications were, we started with elderly, disabled, and then that was low-income, single-family, single-parent families, that kind of thing. We looked at each individual thing that.
So you have a set form?
Yeah.
Then how do we know their age, if they're elderly?
Well, we, we, I, we do a pre-site visit with each one. We do a pre-site visit with each application. We had, we had 127 applications, and 60 were selected.
And, and so I presume, since it's such a great program, that you have a long list or long waiting?
We don't have any right now. There is none right now. We start new, we start new. There's not a list, we just start new, in two years, we'll start again. That's what we do.
Two years from this day, or two years from August, you'll start again to collect names?
What we do, but we start collecting names, and it would be November of next year for the 2017 program.
And so then, when the people, they apply, or they send a letter, or they call you?
There's applications, and we put them.
There are applications.
There's applications that are simple, and we put them at, like, the food banks, we put them at the home, or at the children and youth, we put them at the Area Agency on Aging, and we worked closely with the Area Agency on Aging.
Don't want to say on Sunbury, but in the post office. Well, I want to congratulate you, it was a wonderful program, and you did my neighbors across the street, and it was a good job, so.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. So, anyway, anyone else have any questions? It wasn't just me, it was a lot of people. I mean, the volunteers came out in full force to help, they feed the kids, we had people taking things to their sites, delivering snacks and things to their sites, so it was like they adopted each other, so it's great.
Just cheering and walking in out of the gym.
Yeah, how about this cheering with the gym? But thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I did forget to read up there where it says executive sessions and discuss personnel members were held August 24th and September 14th at 5:00. Any audience comment on the agenda, items?
Joe Bartolo, just on the executive sessions, what department were you discussing at the executive sessions?
What personnel?
What department?
Police.
Police.
I don't want to miss, is that's our I here?
Yes.
The highlights are that, at the Augerik Center, the estimated completion time for the new elevator is about 12 weeks, so we're very excited to have that happen so that we can become handicap accessible, so that will allow access to building for anyone that would like to go there. The business pitch competition, which is hosted by the Business Week Development Committee, is scheduled toward November 14th, so they should be launching some press on that soon. In addition, we are, we've had some great workshops from the community, we'll be announcing that as well very soon. The Lake Augusta Wine Brew Festival is this upcoming weekend, we sold a number of tickets, the Garstel tickets available, so we want to encourage people to do that. We have, as of today, I think 47 vendor spots taken up between different types of vendors, brewers, wineries, and also food vendors.
Forty-seven?
Forty-seven. So, we're very excited, it looks like it's gonna be a great tune to try out, it looks like it's gonna be great weather as well, so we're looking forward to seeing people there. We're encouraging people, of course, to come down afterwards and to participate in, well, to have dinner at restaurants in town, and have bus trips, buses taking people back to other towns, so we can take care of some of the, in terms of what I had. But they're all, fantastic. The Old Town Neighborhood is working on a walking tour brochure. I do know also, if you haven't received it yet, they're planning on submitting Pennsylvania's Historic Preservation Plan, so if you haven't submitted yet, I'm sure you'll see it in the next couple of weeks to review. The promotions group has done discount cards with 28 local businesses on it, and we have sold 80 so far, so that's doing really well. We just passed out flyers to all our businesses, and they can make sure some of that as well. We're starting to plan the late-night shoppers, and I'm not sure if you received it, Paul Baughner was the, I planned to invite, something, they got it, they got that, okay. Any questions?
Well, I'll tell everybody how much the discount cards are.
Discount cards are $5 apiece, if you order them online through the website, they're $6, and we'll mail them to you if you have to do one more.
I'll tell you, folks, there's about 20-some, 28 local businesses on there, some discounts up to 10%, it's the best possible, so they're available at the SRI office.
The tickets for the Lake Augusta, where are, can you get tickets, and how much are they?
Brewer's Outlet or the SRI office for $30. There's actually a PayPal link as well for $30, but I believe there's a small surcharge, because that's online. At Brown Paper Tickets, it's actually 35 plus the surcharge for whatever the processing is. So the best thing to do is to stop by Brewer's if you're local, and that's like $30 for a ticket. So we're trying to keep it as low as we can, and we don't include food, we do include water, you know, and a couple other amenities, but please do, if you know anybody, stop in, it's a great day out, that's water, there's nothing else, and great music, so, please stop in.
Have you left any vendors last year, did we?
No, no, we have probably, less last year than that. Great turnout for the breweries. We also have local restaurants that have bars associated with them or participating. So, like, the Edison is serving, who's had brewery beers, the Roadhouse is serving, a couple different breweries, the Greek is serving, and also the Top Hat, so they all have who's there, who's serving, some sort of unique.
Good job.
So, just have to try, I think, if you did, you know, that's what it's all about, it's just, you know, trying, and, and, yeah, people out to socialize. It is a great event, just for people to get together and chat, I think that's what I get out of it, is that people really, so, really socialize, you know, each other, get to see each other.
Good job. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other question?
I've been out of town for a while on a bicycle tour of my own, so I don't really know if it's going on, a bicycle path, Roger?
Yes, we are trying to, just to start a bicycle awareness, we're doing a path that is, they're talking about participating with the, I can't call it correctly, but, I have the school path, what is it called? Safe something. Safe is the school, safe is the school. So we're actually, created a path from the high school all the way up to Chichester, let me kind of go through the downtown, mostly along Fifth Street, and they changed the path slightly, but they're trying to make sure that there's a nice, safe path to be, to travel, if you want to be with.
Exclusively bike path, there is the path on the road with cars?
Be with, primarily lift cars in the.
So just a separate lane and on the road?
It's all to be negotiated, but, yeah, I said it will be like that. There's a, we still haven't even done the feasibility plan, it's just, you know, we have come up with some specs for it, you know, what we'd like to see how, and now the next step is to go for grants to try and to accomplish that.
Very much just wanted to see if we could even do it, if we could get it through the city, so at least they identify the areas where they can be.
Maybe a start, more bicycle paths across the city.
Yeah, actually, I mean, and in coordination with, like, the Lake Augusta Corridor Plan, which is, you know, the one that goes around Lake Augusta, so, it's other municipalities. Sorry.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you. The only thing I wanted to say about Redevelopment Authority, there is auctions, that'll be advertised for October the 10th. I'm exactly sure how many properties there are right now, there's five, we're talking about that, and there's six, so you'll hear about that before October 10th. New business, for the closure of Fireman's Memorial Service, Dale?
Yeah, they closed Mark Street for the Fireman's Memorial Service on October 11th.
October 11th.
Hysink?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes. Open bid sale of 2008 Crown Victoria.
Didn't get any.
Didn't get any bids, we have them to open. There'll be parts to keep the thing going.
Well, it needs a translation.
There'll be lots of parts.
Well, yeah, the old one's laying out, don't care anything. Yeah, scrapped up.
Approval to pay invoices, John?
We have some bills to pay, just want to remind everyone that budget is extremely tight. That discussion with Treasurer, and things could get pretty ugly in November, so, departments to please remember that all expenditures need to be approved by the councilman, who is the head of your department. We have $116,963.42 in general fund expenses, and $573.43 in fuel expenses, make a motion that we pay our bills.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes. Taxes honoration, John?
Can I make a motion here on that?
Well, what?
All the department heads are supposed to be signing off. I'd like to make a motion, from here to the end of the year, any expenses other than day-to-day have to come to John Shipman to be approved, that be travel, anything.
So that's our responsibility?
Well, apparently, it's your department that's, we're still behind on this, so.
So what are you saying?
I'd like to make a motion.
So that I don't come around?
All the departments have, any major expense has to go from John. Is your second or not? Well, John, I think you covered it, the fact is we short of money. If we run out of money by the end of the year, you know, as.
We have a base amount.
So Dale, let's take and go to the next meeting, see how it plays out financially. Kevin's watching the numbers on a daily basis, I'm sure.
Audience comment?
I'm sorry. Oh, we did a little bit of tax honoration, I'm sorry, John, I never said anything to you. Go ahead.
Make a motion that we pay our bills.
Taxes honoration.
Taxing generation.
Oh, taxing generation? We have three people that have applied, all of them have been approved of the bills, make a motion that we honorate those individuals from the tax.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry? Eister? Hysink?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Okay, now, audience comment. Mr. Zimmerman?
Bob Zimmerman, having Zimmerman Motors. Mr. Mayor, I had some discussions with Pendoc, and it was referred back that obviously communication has to be here in the city, concerning the amount of traffic flowing southbound on 61, and the congestion from the 4th Street red light back through all the way sometimes to Front Street at certain times of the day. So sitting here at City Hall, a lot of times, traffic's already blocked back here just from the intersection at Fourth and Market. So my suggestion is, that if you come to the council with a problem, you should have a resolution to suggest that there be a study evaluation of the timing on that light, so that southbound traffic has an opportunity to maybe turn left before northbound traffic can enter the intersection, and at the end of the cycle, that southbound traffic have another opportunity to turn left, as the northbound will be shut off 68 seconds early. But Pendoc says that that's obviously the state road, the traffic lights, and the idea has to be run through the city council.
Light at Fourth and Market?
Most of it's Fourth and Market, there's a little bit 11th and Market as well, but here's a letter to document.
Bob had talked to me about that, and I called Matt Schwartz from Pendoc, giving me, you guys, like, I guess about six years ago, they did a study on the survey on Market Street, and at that time, they were not recommending any left turns like that. He suggested, if we want to do this, or look into it, like, an engineer is going to study the area light that you're looking at, and then we have to take it back to Pendoc, and Pendoc will decide whether they approve it. So if they would say yes, we would have to go change it. The way they have to do it right now, we have a three-head light, you have to go to a five-head light, you have to have a green arrow, and you have to, you just don't, you can't, so we have to go down through all the lights. We're looking probably at least $10,000 to $20,000, if we did that. Talking to Bob, I called Matt Schwartz.
And some of those lights are involved when Chestnut Street's open?
Just been asked about, do you think that's the main problem?
I do, but I also understand that obviously Chestnut Street's gonna be worked on either next year and the following year, whenever funds are available to continue that project, so, you know, it's not as if it's gonna be over next month when the path's done.
He asked you, but he just doesn't finish.
Probably ran out of money for some reason. We do have the funds to finish the project. Matter of fact, Bob, the grading from front to second now, getting ready for some days of paving. The gas company's finished all their work, they're in some problems last week, which we lost about a week because of some gas lines that weren't deep enough. I was down on the job today, Rick and I both, there's probably two, three days of some curving work to finish up, some sidewalk work. We hope this week that'll be done, and our main thing now is, of course, grading and paving, so we are in the home stretch, and the money is there to pay for it, so.
Well, in this phase of it, my concern is that you got other phases that are moving forward later on.
That's true.
And you'll have this consideration at that time again.
I think a lot of, at least, well, let's go through this year, this winter, we can think about this situation here, and there's no question, Market Street's off at certain times of day.
Have you talked to at Pendoc?
I talked to Matt Beck, actually, yeah.
Did he suggested the light, or did he suggest the light to you? Because years ago.
No, I made the suggestion.
Years ago, there was just no left turn on Market Street between the hours of, what was it, 85?
That's true.
And that would keep the traffic flowing.
And the other thing, just, and you're already aware, this is when Northumberland goes to do their work, all the traffic's gonna be directed onto Front Street, and you'll have all these people not being able to get on Front Street from March and Walmart have all these people not being able to get on Front Street from March and Womack and all these other ones. So, you know, Pendott needs to work with the city on that because that's a year and a half project over there in Norwich. It's going to direct everybody to Front Street. So just some things to obviously keep in back of our mind and try and plan ahead and resolve issues before you go.
I appreciate your services, your letters. It doesn't hurt us just to be in contact with them, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. See, Bob, we're trying to slow months when you go by your dealership and you're looking for a car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a bypass, it was going out by AC boy or something.
Okay, I'm sorry, audience comment? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Julie, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a comment to Justin Strasser. The article that you did, I'm not so much a critic about, well, maybe it's indirectly, a critic of the industrial site. I am more critical of the councilmen that do not address the codes and the nuisances in this ward and other parts of the city. And as far as conspiracy, I know you didn't say that, but it's no secret, it's no secret at all what has gone on over the years on that property as a whole. But thank you. Jim, you had said, what am I going to do with that water? Which I didn't quite understand why Rick wasn't responding to my questions last council meeting, but have you ever driven by or gone to Walmart? They had that big water reservoir, hatch basin thing? That's probably what they need to do there. However, if they would do that, where would you dig? Because if you would dig in any particular spot, you'd probably find the golden hay of all that pollution that's on that property as a whole. And Rick, I don't know why you are not enforcing that code of stormwater management.
First off, until they start building up there, there's, there's stormwater management is part of.
But.
I was, no, wait, no, no. Just you guys, the problem is, when somebody tries to give you an answer to something, you don't want to hear it. You just talk to somebody else or talk to yourself. We've been after, or talking to Moran's and I was up there last week in her stone on that property.
Yes.
And you're going to start putting a swale in it, okay?
What's a swale?
A swale is going to work the water down to Packer Street. And that's all they can do with that property. Any way they look at it is going to go to Packer Street because it's directing the water from coming down over the bank. Okay. And we went through this, it was through this from the time I sat back there before I was even part of council. Okay, the same thing, you're, you're detaining everything over and over and over again. McQuary said, Spadoni from DEP said, until, and I think John would go with you, until there's construction started on that property, stormwater management will be part of that. Until then, there's nothing to be done.
Why isn't, is there stormwater management in place after that was purchased? The entire property?
You mean, when it was?
From Packer Street to Front Street, why wasn't there stormwater put in place when you know that there's issues in the community?
Well, wait, now, you told it about when it was purchased in 2012.
When is the purchase date, yes?
Okay. Can't speak for 2012, but it wasn't.